Next, we'll have a presentation from the 2020 Creative Award for Exemplary Creative Connectivity.
On behalf of the Columbus Municipal School District, I would like to present this award of creative, exemplary creative connectivity to the Columbus Municipal School District and its director, Mr. J.C. Lawton, who came on board in June of 2020 in the middle of the pandemic and did a tremendous job of taking some of the plans we made and implementing and making them well in order for our students to have connectivity throughout the community. Our program is so exemplary that we were recognized by the PREPS organization last year for the connectivity efforts, and as we continue those efforts, he continues to do things that are innovative and great so our students will be able to have connectivity with our laptop devices. So I wanted him to give a little bit of words of some of the things we're doing in our recent connectivity in Columbus.
Thank you. It wouldn't be without support from y'all, obviously, and support from our great administrative staff. I think as an administrative staff, we've done an amazing job just to team together and get this done. We've had a couple, or not a couple, a lot of initiatives. Obviously, we have hotspots that each school has individual hotspots that they sit at home with, both staff and students that don't have connectivity at home. We have provided internet outside. There's one here, but there's also one at each of our schools. And we've also provided local internet connectivity at community hotspots, at different community centers, at the housing authorities, at the Boys and Girls Club. And recently, what I'm excited about is we implemented the mobile Wi-Fi tower at the Riverwalk. So that is now wide open. So if you go to the Riverwalk, you have free internet, SIP compliant internet, provided by the school district. So yeah, you'll see it there. It's right under the bridge, a big old tower. It actually gets you just about, if not all the way, to the pavilion on the Riverwalk.
We would now like to recognize our food service program and our editorial staff for the amazing work that they did during the pandemic. We display some of this information on Facebook and social media. Sometimes we don't have the time because the fire hose is down. I'd love to recognize some of the great achievements in the district and some of the great employees. And so to commemorate your hard work and commitment and the commitment of educators in this great city and community, I would like you to see our food service staff and do the worst at their very best when they continue to have better moments.
And I remember the ladies praying, saying that they would take care of the kids.
When we say take care of our kids, they are truly our kids, and we feel like we cannot let them down. We cannot let them down. This is our ministry. Our ministry is to make sure our kids are fed. We started packing bags in 2020, and we have not stopped. We're having to pack lunches. We're having to change our way of delivering. We're going classroom from classroom delivery. We also go out to six different housing authorities, and out there, we take bags to those six housing authorities.
And so the commitment of our food service employees really speaks to, I feel, their values.
They come together as one from different backgrounds, even different races. They come together and work together as a team, one goal in mind. They got one goal in mind, that's to get the kids fed.
It's a very different situation, a natural catastrophe as opposed to a pandemic, but I remember telling them that we would see the very best and worst in people during this time. The people that feed our students, the people that continue to help and make sure our facilities are clean, that has really made our transition go really well in the Columbus Municipal School District.
We stepped up practically every option, everything that we're doing. It first from sanitizing, you know, you sanitize more frequently. When you check every place, that makes sure every spot that we provide is going to be in a student or a teacher, we need to make sure it's ready, it's effective, and clean.
Going in the building and smelling disinfectants is a good smell during the pandemic.
I told the superintendent, I said, the custodian staff is ready. I said, what we're going to do is we're going to sanitize and clean and have our building safe as we possibly can for our students and our staff, the teachers and everyone.
I think sometimes our food service and our custodians are forgotten, frontline workers of education, and they're just so committed to ensuring that our students get the things that they need.
When push comes to shove, they step up to the plate.
Some people talk about committing to children, and some people do it, and they're doing the work. In the Columbus Municipal School District, they are our heroes.
It's hard to say it was a pandemic, and it was an amazing year, but it was an amazing year because you're about to see some of our kids who did amazing things. But at this time, I'd like Mia Johnson to come up and give a couple of words. She's the first lady, so she won't be in a lost word to talk about this year and the things that they've done. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. Basically, the food service, they did a great, awesome job. They came together, as you saw in the video stated, they did, came together and do what was important, and that was to make sure the kids was fed. We all just got home perfectly. And you know, during the pandemic, when it first started, we didn't even know whether we was going to catch it from anybody.
On behalf of the Columbus Municipal School District, I would like to present this award of creative, exemplary creative connectivity to the Columbus Municipal School District and its director, Mr. J.C. Lawton, who came on board in June of 2020 in the middle of the pandemic and did a tremendous job of taking some of the plans we made and implementing and making them well in order for our students to have connectivity throughout the community. Our program is so exemplary that we were recognized by the PRPS organization last year for the connectivity efforts. And as we continue those efforts, he continues to do things that are innovative and great so our students will be able to have connectivity with their laptop devices. So I want him to give a little bit of words of some of the things we're doing in our recent connectivity in Columbus.
Thank you. Thank you. It wouldn't be without support from y'all, obviously, and support from our great administrative staff. I think as an administrative staff, we've done an amazing job, just a team together, and getting this done. We've had a couple, or not a couple, a lot of initiatives. Obviously, we have hotspots that our, that each school has individual hotspots that they sit home with, both staff and students that don't have connectivity at home. We have provided internet outside. There's one here, but there's also one at each of our schools. And we've also provided local internet connectivity at community hotspots, at different community centers, at the housing authorities, at the Boys and Girls Club. And recently, what I'm excited about is we implemented the mobile Wi-Fi tower at the Riverwalk. So that is now wide open. So if you go to the Riverwalk, you have free internet, SIP compliant internet, provided by the school district. So yeah, you'll see it there. It's right under the bridge, a big old tower. It actually gets you just about, if not all the way, to the pavilion on the Riverwalk.
I don't drive.
It's a point. Yeah. But yeah, we're excited. Again, thank you for all that. And yeah, it's great.
We would now like to recognize our food service program and our volunteer staff for the amazing work that they did during the pandemic. We display some of this information on Facebook and social media. Sometimes we don't have the time because the fire hose is down, so we don't want to recognize some of the greatest achievements in the district and some of the great employees. And so to commemorate your hard work and the commitment of educators in this great city and community, I would like you to see our food service staff and do the worst at their very best, but they continue to have better moments. Worst to me. And I remember the ladies praying, saying that they would take care of the kids.
When we say take care of our kids, they are truly our kids, and we feel like we cannot let them down. We cannot let them down. This is our ministry. Our ministry is to make sure our kids are fed. We started packing bags in 2020, and we have not stopped. We're having to pack lunches. We're having to change our way of delivering. We're going classroom from classroom delivery. We also go out to six different housing authorities, and out there, we take bags to those six housing authorities.
And so the commitment of our food service employees really speaks to, I feel, their values.
They come together as one from different backgrounds, even different races. They come together and work together as a team, one goal in mind. They got one goal in mind, that's to get the kids fed.
This is a very different situation, a natural catastrophe as opposed to a pandemic. But I remember telling them that we would see the very best and worst in people during this time. The people that feed our students, the people that continue to help and make sure our facilities are clean, that has really made our transition go really well in the Columbus Municipal School District.
We stepped up practically every option, everything that we're doing. It first from sanitizing, you know, you sanitize more frequently. And you check every place, that makes sure every spot that we provide is going to be in a student or a teacher. We need to make sure it's ready, it's infected and clean.
Going in the building and smelling disinfectants is a good smell during the pandemic.
I told the superintendent, I said, the custodian staff is ready. I said, what we're gonna do is we're gonna sanitize and clean and have our building safe as we possibly can for our students and our staff, the teachers and everyone.
I think sometimes our food service and our custodians are forgotten, frontline workers of education. And they're just so committed to ensuring that our students get the things that they need.
When push comes to shove, they step up to the plate.
Some people talk about committing to children, and some people do it, and they are doing the work. In the Columbus Municipal School District, they are our heroes.
It's hard to say it was a pandemic and it was an amazing year, but it was an amazing year because you're about to see some of our kids who did amazing things. But at this time, I'd like Mia Johnson to come up and give a couple of words. She's the first lady, so she won't be in a lost word to talk about this year and the things that they've done. Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Basically, the food service, they did a great, awesome job. They came together, as you saw in the video stated, they did, came together and do what was important, and that was to make sure the kids was fed. We all just got home perfectly. And you know, during the pandemic, when it first started, when we didn't even know whether we was gonna catch it from anybody, they left their homes and came out and helped service the kids. I know when they was taking them back to their families, and I applaud them for that, that they sacrificed their family, some of their time to come out and help. And they pretty know exactly how you feel. I went back and told the board, said last time, how they was proud and they acknowledged them. And they just feel good inside for doing service of people that care, helping people, helping kids, is what they felt really good about.
Okay, my last compliment, during the snowstorm, the first snowstorm, we didn't know we were gonna have school. And so by 7:30, Mia called me, when everybody couldn't get to work, and said every food service employee was at work and ready to go to feed kids. So let's give them another round of applause for this.
Thank you very much. We're so proud of our cafeteria staff, our custodians. You are truly heroes. And I do remember you all going to the housing authorities, you know, early mornings. The ladies was out preparing food and lunches, and we were so grateful to have you to do this service. Continue doing it with a smile always. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item, we'll move to item six. And Board of Education, a consideration to approve our minutes. Board, we'd like to ask you to approve the minutes altogether. Consideration to approve the review minutes for May 5th, quarterly for May 8th, regular meetings, May 10th, and our budget workshop, May 26th. Our request for a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumay. Have a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in approval, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Item B, trustee, district review. As of now, the trustees, we do not have any reports. We haven't been anywhere. Have we? I don't think so. We've been doing some webinars, but I think we have something else coming up in June. Item number two, discussion and our consideration of capital improvement plan for CMST. Dr. Schumay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I do wanna give you, bring you up to date as far as the [inaudible]. I do have Mr. Stafford here that's gonna give an update on parking lot situation as far as moving forward with that. Mr. Stafford.
Well, good evening. What I have handed to y'all is a picture of the parking lot that encompasses both the sale drop off and the stadium. Y'all familiar with the area since we last met? We met on site with Mr. Little. We've talked with Dr. Dito on occasion, and Dr. LaBott. And so with that, we've been asked to look together a plan. If y'all recall, y'all approved us years ago to look at this and kind of put together an overall plan. We presented and kind of put it on pause February of last year to move forward. Now, what we've been asked to do, if y'all look at the drawing we just gave you, the base bid, which really addresses parking and the entry and exits for Ball Stadium, where we would like to move next. And we already had everything prepared. We didn't see why not to go ahead and get a bid number for the remainder of the parking lot as well, since the work's been done. It's just a matter of formatting it in the bid process. So what we'll also do, you see there alternate number one in yellow and alternate number two there in purple. With that, those will also pick up the other two priorities in that parking lot, at least get you a number if you don't agree with it. But the base bid picks up the perfect priority, which is fixing the main parking area that you stay in and day out. And so since our contract was already in place, there was already fee left, there's an hourly not to exceed contract. Our discussion with Dr. Dito admitted just to get that contract forward. Go ahead and get your bids in hand. With y'all's approval, we'll bring those numbers back to you through consideration to move forward. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Right now, this base bid is around $800,000 for our finalizing plan. Still, the overall lot, we're looking at around $1.5 million, about half of the overall cost. As I said, all the improvements. This also picks up a few other base repairs and some of the [inaudible] that have gotten pretty bad as well, just a small expanded scope from our original discussion, but nothing else. But again, with y'all's approval, we'll pick up that contract. And please go to advertise for bids and bring that back to you.
Have any questions? Presenting questions at this. Able to get that work completed from prior to school starting?
No, ma'am, and not at this point. It would be a 30-day advertisement process, basically. That point, you go through contracting, you know, normally, at least another.
If approved tonight for you to go on and get your bids, that will, on an average, will probably have it approved during July.
Yes, ma'am. So we were approved tonight. We'll be able to get out the bid relatively quick, because in the next week or so, y'all would have bids sometime in July. And in normal process of time, you would have a contractor on board starting in early August. They may be able to complete it by the end of September. But I'm kind of giving you averages. We can push that schedule as much as the contractor allows us to push. The only thing we have to stick by that we can't [inaudible] state requires, because the project would be [inaudible].
Do we know when our first game is, first home football game? Is this September 3rd?
September 3rd.
How many games do we have in September?
One, two, back to back.
How many games?
One, one, one last. And I know we discussed at that time, I go back to her, her getting some information. I know I asked about many part of it, and we were just told, well, we didn't need to do that or something. So now we're finding out to have to do what we talked about a month before.
Well, we're talking about two different things last time, [inaudible]. Specifically, padding some areas that could be done, that the cost was under $50,000, but in our discussions, that was ultimately. And so in discussions, this was to come back and basically take our existing contractor and all of it all forward and get it fixed right. And those that continue to spend money, this happened to be redone weeks later.
Right. I think that's what we had talked about in our capital improvement plan, is actually doing the whole thing. And I know when we first started talking about it, it was about $900,000, and then it's $1.1 million, and now it's $1.5 million. The needs getting worse, the cost getting higher.
I guess, I thought we had approved to get the bids. We didn't get that approved, or we did, or we didn't?
They said we didn't need to do it.
This is where we are right now, as far as food gets the bids. What we need is, and I would say, that's where I would recommend, is for [inaudible] to get the bids, so that we can. Now, on this page, it puts [inaudible] and two on that, so that is the whole part of that, providing if you wanted to do it. However, the base bid would be to help the area right in front of the stage, that area, so we can't get [inaudible] to the stage and get them into cage and hot and work for the bid, also the bid number one and number two. If, my suggestion is, you know, if you can get that done, you try to move as quickly as possible. If it's the first game, we always have those other sides of that parking lot that we can actually use.
No, now we can.
Yeah, we can now.
The other side of that parking lot in which we would not, if we don't approve it, they can use those areas to [inaudible] on those first two games if we need to.
And just to clarify, I think it actually was a couple of meetings ago, because what it was is y'all asked us to still wait because y'all were gonna have your retreat and wanted to discuss further, and that's why nothing was decided last time we were here.
So, Madam President, I make the motion that we approve for them to do the bid, so that we can kind of see where we're standing.
It has been motioned by Mr. Spears to approve, to approve all the bid process to begin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
We hope to be back in front of y'all by the month, and thank y'all.
Is that all, Dr. Dito?
Mr. Little recovered most of the rest of the capital improvements at the review meeting, so that's why we're.
I think you were gonna give us a report on the track.
Okay, and I'm still in the process of doing research with the companies that did the track. I got in touch with the architecture and engineering, but the company specifically, I put in phone calls. I happened to have a return phone call on that particular person that did the track. And I'm not sure if it's actually still under warranty or not. That was one of the reasons why I did make that phone call, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. But as soon as I do hear back from them, I will be reporting to the board what I found.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item three, discussion of home campus recovery, review of expenditures and reimbursements, payments for projects. Mr. Taylor? Good evening, Mr. Taylor. How are you?
Lady, I was still asking. We had a free bidding conference a couple of weeks ago. We were scheduled to take bids, actually, last Thursday. The settlement conference was pushed back to July the 8th. July 8th, we have a settlement conference in federal court in Oxford on July 8th. So we pushed the bid back a week, give the bidders a little more time, and also to shorten the time between the bids and when the board could award them, because the contractors don't like holding the bids with the current situation with price escalations. So we're opening bids this week, on Thursday. So I'll be back up here on Thursday. We'll open bids on Thursday. We'll have competitive bids. We had sent the, we had sent all the document, we sent the drawings and specifications to all the scope of work to the insurance carrier and also to archives and history. So they had those drawings to review it. It's gonna be crucial that the insurance company agrees with the scope, because they'll be paying for it. And so hopefully, the settlement conference on the 8th, I believe, the July board meeting is on the 22nd. I just saw on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And so we'll be back here 22nd. Hopefully, to be able to award a contract and begin construction on it, so that's where we are on the hunt.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Taylor? Ms. Rogers?
Yes, the board will look at the information that I gave them to look at the recovery part of it. This is a regular report that I give each night. We discussed this in the review meeting as well. I'm requesting that we withdraw money from our money market account to pay ourselves back the negative cash bills. We have to find 3027 and find 3029. And also to recognize the interest the account has accrued and to transfer those funds as well into fund 1122. 1122 is the incentive fund that when the money market was first set up, the board agreed that any interest earned on that account would go into fund 1122 for our incentives.
Board, do you have any questions? At this time, I'm requesting a motion to approve the request to withdraw the recorded amount from the money market account. Has been, the motion has been made by Mrs. Young, has been seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Any other discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item four, contract renewal updates. Board, review. Do you have any discussion with the contract renewal updates? Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll move on to item five. Does one want to say something? We'll move to item five, consideration and our discussion to approve board members to attend the Mississippi School Board Association Southern Regional Conference. That's July the 18th, and I believe it goes through the 20th. I need a motion to approve. Has been motioned by Mr. Spears, second. Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item six. Consideration to discuss and approve the board attorney's contract extension. I need a motion to approve the contract extension. Been motioned, the motion has been made by Mr. Spears, second. Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Now we're moving to item C, goal updates policy B A. We're looking at student attendance reports. Board, do you have any questions or comments regarding the student attendance report? Item two, one, student discipline reports. We have a report for each school. We have the monthly and the annual, and for the district, annual discipline report. Do we have any questions or comments for it at this time? Moving on to item three, dropout report, goal one. Any questions, comments? We've read it, moving right along. Number four, the safety report, number of accidents in the school, goal four. Any questions, comments, discussion? Moving right along. Number five, COVID-19 update. Any questions, comments, discussion? We do receive a report weekly. Dr. LaBott's office emailed us this. Moving on to item D, superintendent update and reports. Dr. LaBott. Dr. Labat.
Good evening. First, I want to recognize my students have grown so big. They were so so small last year and to see them here today, so I just wanted to recognize them today. Um they're gonna have a great presentation. But I I did not recognize a couple of them because they've gotten so tall, so. All right, I first start with the goals of the district, um one, two, three, four, and five. Uh number one, Columbus Municipal School District will increase student achievement. Number two, the CMSD will establish and maintain a safe and orderly climate in every school. Three, an increasing number of students in the CMSD will increase a positive K twelve education experience. Number four, CMSD will establish partnerships with parents, community stakeholders, and community childcare pre-K programs to ensure that children are ready for school. And five, CMSD will ensure fiscal prudence and proper allocation of resources from educational program. And this is from our stakeholders meeting. So these are some of our successful initiatives that we go over every month. Some of them are still in progress, we'll be on the next uh sheet uh slide. But the coding pre-K eight, it was uh I would say very innovative and progressive now that we have um state law saying that coding has to be in every school district within the next five years. We've had it for um almost three years. Um secondary edu- uh college and career coding and cybersecurity, we're working on that and working on a partnership with Mississippi State EMCC to look into artificial intelligence. Intervention and support for MTSS. I know Ms. Young talked about some of this these issues. We did talk about it during the retreat about MTSS and the complexities of making sure it's done well and right. Um and so we continue to work on that and um massage processes to make sure that we're gonna implement and continue to implement well. Next, um district behavior monitors, behavior interventionist academic coaches. We have continued to do weekly data analysis, district-wide PBIS, we've done extensive professional development of that. Um middle school ACT preparation, they're gonna be more intensive there. The district-wide literacy initiative and district PLC and professional development. Next, these, there's some things that are in progress that we continue to work on, and they speak for themselves. I did meet with the Air Force Base twice. We will be doing some intensive um integration with ASVAS. Some things that we did prior to uh pandemic that will will be more intensified as we go to five days a week in August. Um our dropout prevention plan is going well, um and our operation graduation is going to be more intense. Teacher pipeline initiative with M D W is going to be a great initiative for our students. We have over sixty students signed up that would like to be teachers um and working on the mentoring program and professional development calendar for those students who haven't mentored over the year for the teacher pipeline. And some of these initiatives are what happens in high performing jurisdictions that we're implementing from the district side to make sure that we have initiatives that will um take the district forward. Um intensive early literacy focus and training, um the M D A grant for foretold literacy, like I said, that will start into December of twenty of this year. Um our high quality instructional materials. One thing I wanted to explain to the board, the high quality instructional materials our student, our teachers oversee is a great step for their the district because they didn't have quality instructional materials in their hand for instruction. Another important of it is not like Kool-Aid, you don't put like the great Kool-Aid in, the sugar in the water and think that tomorrow's gonna happen because it doesn't work like that. It's a systematic change that requires our teachers to really get gross in the curriculum and in the resources to be able to teach well. All right, campaign for grade level reading, grade level reading, that's going extremely well. We're gonna miss to finish the report. We did did the analysis and really had three strong role goals um that we'll be implementing in a long, pretty twenty thirty report, report that we will have completed. And I'll um we'll try to get done with the team by this weekend. I'll be my weekend project um to finish that and hopefully that we will be completed by the month of July and will be a a Columbus, a great Columbus, we're gonna call it Columbus at large um campaign for grade level reading. So that's everyone in community, private, public, every student by third grade, reading on grade level, parent advocacy, some of the other things we've talked about extensively. Literacy integration ongoing. We continue to do mapping and some professional development. Really, the uh scaffolding part of it is gonna be really important this year because we're gonna have to scaffold back to work on unfinished learning. So the planning for this year will be intensive. Um technology and instructional professional development, news news lab, which is um either on this agenda, I think it's on the should, operation graduation, community accountability. Did not read the article in paper, but it talks about hopes and dreams. But the community accountability is all about explaining the accountability system to parents and things that we're doing well in terms of parents' hopes and dreams. It is very different when I ask parent, what are your hopes and dreams of your child? And how can we help you achieve hopes and dreams than for me to talk about the acceleration rate, right? Like you don't know where that is, right? And so you really don't want to know about that. You want to know how we are going to work to make sure your child achieves their uh hopes and dreams. Um intensive, intensive uh preparation for our ninth graders. Some of those things are starting now. Um really uh really want our numbers in summer school to increase. Very difficult for attendance in summer, no requirement. So we are having some times of getting our students in to um into summer school. Um I think it's going good, but it's just hard for them to come every day because it's not a requirement. And I got that message in DC. Okay, so then we go into professional development, verbal line of um at each school. Uh we did do the Questar pilot, which was good for the school to be exposed to those um strong and difficult test questions. Um parent advocacy, this is something that will continue to be um a part of what we do. We will have Dr. Courtney Taylor from EMCC to talk about workforce development, enrollment, and some of the intensive STEM programs and MOU programs that we partner with with EMCC. Um in addition to that, I have some partners in DC now be working on community advocacy, teaching parents and students how to advocate and change policy on their own. Um I'm reading the book right now, and so I'm hoping that I'll be able to get the partner to come and do small action groups to tell uh our children who are, who didn't need a book, will be here today changing policy, uh to give them some information about how to be um stronger advocates for themselves in order to demand excellence in their community. So we're gonna do that for parents and community member. So I hope that you all attend, we may do some of these virtually and in person. I'm sure these, they'll be here. Uh so that's that's gonna be, and that's gonna be with fifty can out of DC. Um student advocacy club, where I'm at at the high school, have some things that are gonna be prepared for them to take some stronger advocacy. Um some of the first steps is we had our our students to register, our students to vote this year. Uh over, I think, a hundred seniors ended up voting, and we took them around the community and they voted. So we feel that civic engagement is just as important, and the whole child is a big, big part of what Columbus Municipal School District does. Um we are an official Shields Microsoft AP Computer Science School. Um so they will be trained this summer. We have uh people uh in the community at Sinead that will be helping mentor our teachers through AP Computer Science. AP AP courses are very difficult to get instructors because generally they're trained, they're trained across the country. And then they come in and after a short training and teach that, we'll teach the AP course. What I like about the Microsoft Shields program is its intensive training from people in the field in your community that's supporting the teacher either virtually or in person to make sure that the instruction has quality. Because the AP pass rate is very low. And so we want to make sure if we have a program that is successful. Um and that with partnership with MSMS and in providing more AP courses will be a strong way for us to advocate for our college-bound students.
Dr. Labat?
Yes.
Questions go quick before you leave that slide. Uh my first question is, uh on there, you said, uh the Falcom Academy. All right, that particular uh bullet, the Falcom Academy is for ninth grade students who enter at risk. All right, these are kids that's in the eighth grade right now.
Correct.
And they'll be moving up to the ninth grade.
Correct.
What are we doing for the eighth graders?
So that is our intensive program to work with them. We've invited most of those students to come in the summer to start that program. They met with them before they left at school, left to start school. A lot of those kids are at age to be employed. So and I just want to know, as a district, this is a problem throughout the state. A lot of students are working and work on the hybrid schedule and and modified schedules throughout the state. So we are working with them to get them in summer school, June and July, also working on some edgenuity and some credit recovery with some of those students in order to get them to uh um ahead before August. It's just a very complex, complex situation.
I'm really concerned about the eighth graders now.
Yes.
Your seventh graders that are moving into eighth graders. And uh I'm thinking back to the principal's uh report that she's giving us with that school being a targeted school.
Yes, ma'am.
And uh really the attention that we're giving um the targeted areas as as to why. And if we are tracking them so that that particular school will come out of improvement. Now, if we, when they, when they, when the students do go on until the ninth grade, that's a good initiative. Because the ninth graders are the ones that has a lot of behavior issues, peer pressures, things like this going on with them, along with them being at risk academically or behaviorally. But at the same time, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at the middle school, if they are moving from one, from the sixth grade to the seventh grade, from the seventh grade to the eighth grade, and what is it um that we are really looking at for that particular group of students? I'm really looking, and uh I see where we're doing the highly qualified instructional materials. That's a great thing, and I know we'll have a specific report on that in July, right? We will have that specific as far as.
As far as the plans, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, great question, and as these are things that I touch on every month, but there's no better process to analyze your students that are at risk than MTSS. I had this discussion with us during our district-wide training as we talked about MTSS, and Dr. Page detailed the importance of it.
Yes.
Um I talked about as a principal for over a decade that that the longest days in my, in my, my week was MTSS because it was two days looking at twenty-five percent of my population that had these types of issues. But it was the most important work a principal can do. The most important work that they do is to sit down and analyze their students and their attendance issues, their behavior issues and academic issues with parents and a team of people, and work to diagnosis issues and give a detailed plan on how they're going to work through it. And as I discussed with the team this week, it is a mindset issue, it is a lot of work. You know, as a district, we're seeing people do a lot more work than they've done in decades. It's basically what it is. So sometimes you hear, I'm doing a lot of things, not that I'm doing a lot of things, just high performing things that are important for these kids to get a high quality education. It's what has to be done in order to do well. And so we're doing that at that pace, and we want what's best for our students. But there's no better process than answer of your question, and I know with your special education background, you know that that is an important endeavor. It's just analyzing those students individually, and it takes a lot of time and work. It wore me out as a principal. It wore me out. But it was the work that had to be done in order for students to be successful. And then that's what we want, we want to prioritize our students, we want to improve academic achievement, and we have to do the hard work to get there. And it's a lot. I always say I put a lot of acronyms on our team, PBIS, MTSS, but they're all great thing for students.
Yes.
Just like the gifted program is a great. So we don't want, we don't want to miss out on our high performing students. Any more questions?
Yes. Um, Dr. Labat, you mentioned high quality instructional materials. And, you know, as a board, we of course looking, you know, at the information that we've been provided, the resources that's been presented to us regarding mitigating the learning laws for summer and fall. What intensive or specific resources are we using now in the summer for the summer smart academy?
Okay. Right now, we're doing uh several different things. Um specifically, we're using, um, first of all, we're using acceleration model. Uh we are using reconstruction and other models to, and and just great, strong, great level teaching um like any other remedy to improving um unfinished learning. So that I would say that would be number one, so our number one resources. Um we are literacy focused, and we're really working on on this, on the standards that we know they'll need for the next grade level. So um it comes back to quality teaching. Um and we're also gonna work on enriching because we know that as we develop the brain that we, us having other activities and then taking field trips is a big part of them taking steps to come back in August and enriching their minds after being in isolation for so long. So the SEO part is very important.
What about specific resources for the fall at the elementary level, middle school level?
So, um, we, we don't, we can't talk about what specific, we just have specs right now. If you want to look at the bids, when we get ready to give them out, the ones that come up for bids. So we say we want this particular quality of product, okay? We can't say we want, I don't even want to say. We say we want a specific product. We just say we want these particular items on the clearinghouse that have been shown to be a high quality instructional material for common course stages in the state of Mississippi for reading math, et cetera.
With this being June, will we be able to get the product back in time?
Right, well, we just have to follow the bid, bid procedures. It should be here by August, a lot of them are like um electric uh or virtual or electronic products, but we should have them done, and we may have to extra work. We do this every summer. We do the bid process for iReady, we do this every single summer. Um now we're buying more resources because we have S F lines, but we're doing the same process, process, um process. Any other questions? And and like I said, the high quality instructional material is great that they're going through a clearinghouse, and they've been vetted by professionals to say that they're good products. But the board has to understand it's not Kool-Aid, that we just don't give it to them and it magically happens. That when you give a teacher a new instructional material, that they have to work on using that resource with instruction, and it's a very complex situation. I know that they do it, they're gonna be prepared. We are working on a professional development schedule which will be intensive, but it's just not organizational and effectiveness in schools are complex, complex entities and are complex agencies, and instruction is hard work. And instruction after a pandemic is hard work, and it's going to take intense instructional support. Are they ready for them? Yes, but it's going to be several new materials that they're gonna have to use in order to make things right. I think they're gonna do a phenomenal job, but I just don't want everybody to think that I'm gonna come in here with a tall head and pull a rabbit out.
Oh, not.
I think my kids could. Any other questions? These are some of the initiatives that Ms. Young talked about that we're using to mitigate some of the learning loss strategies. Um and there's just some things that we're doing that's just good teaching, learning, and schooling mechanisms. We um did put um all year after-school program into all of our, our application so that that will be an option. We also discussed in um district training that we are going to have go into the communities and churches, again, like we were doing before the pandemic, and get parents to sign up for after-school program in their communities. We're gonna go to them and to the churches and sign them up. So we're gonna start that schedule. So we'll be in churches, and we will be in the housing authorities and the communities and at the Boys and Girls Club signing up students to get into their after-school program. We want to go to them and start that. We didn't like being hybrid, but you know, it's what you have to do. But we're, we'll be back in the community and at the end of July and August, sign up our students for year-long after-school program. Just another, um, I think, point of focus that's positive is the support from the community has been outstanding as it relates to non-perennial mentoring support, um not only from the um the great um organizations such as Omega Psi Phi, Phi Beta Sigma, Kappa Alpha Psi, and Alpha Phi Alpha, but also um the Air Force Base will be doing an intensive program. We meet this week with our elementary and high school students, and we want them in uniform and talk about, to talk about careers. We also talk about gap students, students that are, that are not ROTC and are athletes or students that are taking advanced courses that may want a military life but don't have the opportunity. So we're gonna have a leadership series and um several things to deal with gap kids. We just say all those kids that are in between, and I don't want to say forgotten because I don't forget any of you when I make a decision, don't think that, but they're just kids that are not in an activity that we want exposed. It's the same mindset for um the teacher pipeline program, that giving them an incentive to build up their GPA so they're able to take due enrollment, getting them in ninth grade, exposing them to professionals, letting them see the light at the end of the tunnel and holding their hand through the way. Okay, so the non-perennial support has been awesome. We're also working on a program that will really work on internships. I know that um I'm gonna get Kevin to do some things and some other people to build partnerships so we can have internships. So the community has continued to keep its promise about um doing some mentoring and some internship with with career development in the community since we're so rich in resources with, it comes to specific professions and job sources in the area. since we're so rich in resources with, it comes to specific professions and job sources in the area. This is the re-development. The only thing that's been added to this plan is that we have made and finalized our plans with Ingles to do short-term workforce development. This is the same as last month. And so, we're still working on some of these things. But the last thing is program has started with Ingles and Forge to work on workforce development funds to assist students with short-term courses. I think there's a big wedge, and I hate to say that because I don't write federal policy, but Career Technical Education and Perkins Funds are the great program. But it's not kind of been dynamic with the times of education. For instance, you have to make a two-year commitment in order to be a CTE student. Well, if I'm an athlete, I can't give a two-year commitment because I have four block athletic. If I have a specific academic course I have taken, I may not get this exposure. So, when I start talking about these gap kids, we kind of think in the terms of, what kids are we missing? When we don't, we can't provide this specific service or this type of agency to a student. So, same thing with the short-term courses. What if I'm an athlete? I decide not to, I want to go to college or community college. It's my senior year and I've never done CTE. If I've never done CTE, I'll be able to go to Hunt and maybe get a short-term course that is good for me to be able to go into the workforce or go and continue my skill development at EMCC and then a four-year institution. So, we always try to look at the kids that are in the gap of places where we're not meeting a need or of specific students. And I hate calling them lost kids, but they're just kids in the gap in specific programming that don't get the exposure because of a decision they made in school, such as, I just wanted to play baseball, right? I always wanted to be an engineer and I wanted to see, or I'm very intrigued with technology, but I couldn't take the dual enrollment class. I couldn't do this because I was playing a sport, but deserved the same kind of exposure. So, we really are working hard in our programming to fill in the gaps for those kids that may not be able to get that type of exposure as a high school student. And some people have blanked out on scheduling. But it's not scheduling. We just can't be all things to all people. We're sure going to try. Any other questions? All right. Safe return in person, everybody's favorite subject. The plan is on the website for feedback. This is a working continuing document, document. We are working on the complexity of the weekly COVID testing that I talked about last month with Dr. Dobbs, the weekly testing. It was very generic in the plan because as you work through a pandemic with 30, 300 students and 550 employees, things change tomorrow, right? And so, we were very general but very detailed with specific things because we have to be. We just don't know what happened, will happen. 30% of Mississippians are vaccinated. That may be a high number for some. But when 12-year-olds and below can't be vaccinated and we have five elementary schools and a middle school, I have to do what's best for my employees and students. And that's what we will continue to do from a safety aspect. So, if you want to look at that continuity plan, give some feedback. It's something that we'll also continue to revisit. But as CDC guidelines, that we have an update before that time, we'll continue to do so. Are there any questions? Okay. I sent this information about our class of 2021, about the work keys, 61 students in dual enrollment, 18 participating in dual enrollment this credit this summer. And that's from that free program that they have at EMCC. We have several students. They also have a gap program that's going to help them with skill development for these students. This class is so resilient because they ended their junior year in a pandemic and started their senior year in a pandemic. And so, there's programs that EMCC is going to do to kind of bridge the gaps also. All right. These are our third-grade reading gate scores. The district overall is 52.6% with three and higher. And then, those are the respective elementary numbers for the third-grade reading gate. Any questions? We will have an intensive pre-K literacy program to really work on some of the gaps that we will feel, we will feel with our students with a third-grade reading gate. And so, you know, this is a concern, but I'm always concerned two years from now too. So, but we will continue to do the work to mitigate this situation. Any questions?
Quickly. Mm-hmm. If I'm looking at this correctly, let's say, for example, Cook, is that 53.4?
That's correct.
Okay. So, if I'm looking at the percentages there, okay, out of how many third graders passed and how many third graders did not?
Okay. I can give you a number. This is just percentages, but we can get you some numbers. And we'll send it in a weekly report.
Get those numbers.
We'll send in a report.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. That way, we can really gauge it, especially when the principals are presenting to us.
Perfect.
We'll have that information.
Of course.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? The Summer Smart Academy. This is our enrollment numbers by school. And we discussed this at the review meeting. I don't like that my team looks bad. Well, how about attendance this week, Ms. Murray?
This involvement is from the end of last week. We started working back onto this week. There was a few of these students that were chosen and were moving into Mississippi along the way. So, that's going to be wrong with that. But we'll have that college that's updated, production lot, and ended this week. Starting in, so that she has her current number for the extension.
Okay. And we can put that in a weekly report. All right. Any questions? All right. There will be intense focus on attendance with PBIS. Because we've been out of school for so long, the three months from March to May, and then going to a hybrid schedule, the focus in education attendance is going to be intensive. The Committee for Grade Level Reading has an amazing plan that I think is going to be great that we're going to use in the community and as a district. I think it's going to be absolutely fabulous. So, some incentives and some things that you can do. When you come to school every day and you read, big things happen. I also will be meeting with the Chancery Court Judges. Sorry, Mr. Hainfield. There's a lot of intense issues with attendance and parents that happen to share on the hybrid schedule. And I just want to make sure that we're all in one accord about the importance of attendance. And so, I'll be meeting with those judges to just have a conversation about how important the, the law is and how the enforcement of the law, especially now, is one of the most important things that they can do to support the district's student achievement and to prevent the poverty cycle. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Hainfield.
I'm really interested in finding out more about that campaign for grade-level reading.
Okay.
Later on.
All right. And I can send you some information. I think once we've been approved, but once we officially become, I'll be able to say, I don't like just talking about things randomly.
You can, we can do it later.
Right. All right. We'll get the report. And then, once we are, we've done the report and they make the announcement, they just sent an email that they're doing some other research. And they want to include us because they think we're going to do a great job. And I know we will. All right. And this is some of the things we're doing for our pre-K program focus, which I think we've done some great things to reach out with stakeholders. We'll continue to do so. Any questions? This is the special education update for extended school year. Can you all see? Can you see? Okay. Okay. So, extended school year. This is a program for special education. And these are the dates and the instruction that will be received for our students. And Ms. Murray, this is, what location is that? Smith Lane or are you here? I can't see anything. At all schools. Okay. So, they're at all schools. Perfect. Thank you. This is food service and summer feeding, 15 locations. Seven community location, eight schools are open to provide food to children. They have new nutritional standards. There are, want increased participation, improve our service and accountability, manage cost effectiveness, and provide health and nutrition for CMS's family and community areas. Present environment supports development of healthy eating habits. And they're doing a phenomenal job doing that. Any questions? Technology update. Yes, I'd rather you.
Go ahead, go ahead. This one.
I'll keep it quick. Website redesign update. This is, I think, I think what I'm going with. It's a multi-year contract. I'll present it to the board, obviously, when I've actually made the move. But I just want to give you an update where we're at. I've been trying to do some extensive research and I've had a couple meetings with them. I think security policies-wise, it works with your request to make sure things are consistent. With this, I am, I have, I have more capability to lock down specific things. With the other things that I presented last month, the other solutions, it's kind of either have all of it, you have half it, or none of it. This is a little bit more manageable. The antivirus, Sopos, started that on June 2nd. I have gotten a couple hundred devices installed with that, working on the Macs and some of the other devices to complete that installation. Power School SIS update. So, that's moving from Information Now, I Now to Power School SIS. We've been working really hard on that to show Carter and employees been just killing it, doing a great job on it. It's a lot of work. We have to have like, it, it's a ton to do items every week. And we're having, we, like, they're giving out weekly, sometimes bi-weekly, calls to, to get it done. So, we haven't done it before school starts. It's a, a quick timeline, but we're still on with the deadline. So, that, so that will be done mid-July, mid to late July. The, I, I do have a request to, or I think I, I, yes, tonight, I have a request to hold a reverse auction or to put out a bid for the freshman laptops so that we can go ahead and get those, in hopes of getting those, obviously, before school starts. There's a huge just rush for anything, excuse me, anything technology-wise. You can go drive by your local car lot and you'll see there aren't that many cars. Or there's, because of chips. There's, there's limited amount of computer chips in the world. Huge problem with that. So, that affects smart appliances, cars, and obviously, computers. So, it, it's kind of a, just grab and scan, hope for the best. We're going to grab, with this, obviously, we have very specific line items that we have to hit that meet, like, the quality that we've been giving our, our friends. Just, to be honest, worried about the timeline that vendors can provide on that because of how limited computer chips are in the world right now. But then, as I mentioned earlier, the Wi-Fi tower installed, the Riverwalk. That's, that is a, that is in conjunction with the City of Columbus. So, they're helping us with that. I shouldn't have mentioned that earlier. Obviously, that's their property. So, we work to make sure it's okay to put it there. For now, I think it's going to stay there for the time being. They did say they may want to move it in the future. But funny enough, all the places they asked to move it, we already provide internet to. So, so that's actually good news. But yeah, it's going well over there. Unless you have any questions.
That's my line. Do you have any questions? All right. This is the Office of the Assistant Superintendent of Federal Programs, Akdena.
Good afternoon. On the federal program side, we are, we are actually working on the revisions for FY19 and FY20 budgets as planned with MDE. That means we, they, they've sent some things back. We have to revise, send it back to them to get it, the final approval, to get these funds, funds budgeted and spent. We began uploading the FY21 documentation for federal programs to Title I Crate. Title I Crate is our document. It's an online document, a program that we can scan in the documents for federal programs. We are having a monitoring visit in July. And FY1920 is actually the year that we, we're going to be monitored for. So, that, those documentations are also being put into Title I Crate as we speak. We've been working with the principals to make sure that the information is uploaded into Title I Crate at that building level so that we can have as accurate as a monitoring that we can, you know, through the, the State Department. We have collaborated with private schools in submitting the information that is needed for our title programs for FY22. FY22 application is, we're, we're looking for it to come online within this next week. I got an email stating that they were in the process of pulling it online. So, that's any time now. So, we have been preparing for FY22 with the needs assessment, integrating some of those things and working with the application. We've worked with principals so that we can start our stakeholder meetings. We do have a district-wide stakeholder meeting with IDEA and federal programs on June the 15th. So, I think that's next week. It's the 15th next week. We get, June 15th. We do have it advertised in the paper to have that program. And that is going to be open to the public. It's going to be in the afternoon, 5 o'clock in the afternoon so we can get as many people in as possible. We have created, completed and submitted our S and 2 application. We are working with those revisions from MDE to get those funds in process to be advocated. Well, they are already advocating. We just need to make sure that we have our process, our application completely approved before we do the expenditure on those. We did have some collaboration meetings for S and 3 with the district level for planning. We, we are, again, are waiting for application for the application for FY22. We've, the, the plan that Dr. Levatt was talking about, the safe return to school plan, that is one of the requirements for S and 3 to have it posted and have comments made from the, on the website. So, that is one of the things that we had to do in order for them to push the S and 3 funds to the districts. And we're now waiting for that application for S and 3. On the transportation side, we are actually in the process. I've gotten an appraiser to start working on appraisers of the buildings that we are interested in for housing and transportation department. Now, once the appraisers come in, I will, I will have a recommendation for the board as soon as the appraisers are done. We can get an estimate on the cost to equip that shopping area and secure the building's parameters. That means we're looking at, you know, the fencing, how much it's going to cost for the fencing, the lighting, the camera system, and plus, get some tools and instruments as far as being able to work with those buses and have Mr. Page able to work with the buses at that building. We are waiting for our S and 2 plan to be approved again to move forward in the purchasing of our three buses. We, we were looking at, you know, recommending the 13 buses, the 11 buses for Reg. Ed, two of them for Spade Ed. And those 13 buses have been approved by the State Department. However, we wanted to wait till we had those funds available to us to do the three buses. With those federal funds, we do have to get two quotes for those buses. So, I can't use just the state contract. So, I'm working on getting that second quote for the three buses for those, for the S and 2 money. We also in the process of doing diagnostic checks for several of the buses that we mentioned prior to, that we had over at the stadium and needing repairs. Those diagnostic tests are forthcoming. So, we're going to have that list forthcoming. We'll also work with waters to continue our maintenance service agreement. And that is on your agenda for today. The lot will be month-to-month. And they put, they have put that in agreement. And it's going to be based on, we'll, we'll give them a notice to, to vacate. And it's gonna be based on, we'll give them a notice to vacate the premises for in a 90-day period. So we have to give them a 90-day notice. Once we secure a building and we know we're gonna be moving forward to securing that building, that's when we'll give them the notice to clear the lot. We are currently running routes for the Summer Smart Academy. Some of our bus drivers are doing fantastic job with that. We do have some field trips planned with the Boys and Girls Club along with the Housing Authority. And the last thing on the list is, I was gonna give you an update. We do have two nursing physicians that are being approved tonight. That would give all our, put all our nursing physicians being filled, and that will give us a nurse at every campus for the 21, 22 school year, including CSA. And SROs, we are still on track to get all except for one of our schools covered in August. And the reason we say that is because we do have one that's out on medical leave right now that we're trying to see exactly what's gonna happen with her.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Deo, we had asked before about a maintenance person for the bus shop potentially if we end up going their route.
Yes, ma'am.
What would be the equitable salary? We had talked about that before in the area. Did we get that information?
What we've looked at and we've talked to surrounding areas, and it's around $43,000 as a starting salary. However, the question is finding that mechanic, that certified mechanic that's gonna wanna come in and work with the district. Yes.
Okay, you said $43,000, that including salary benefits, or just salary?
That was, that was salary.
Just salary.
That was salary. Benefits would be, I'm not sure, we're gonna have to get with Holly on that, that's as far as how to calculate the benefits.
The benefit would be additional 25.51%, and then you add another transfer on top of that, which is about $4,800 for next year.
And now without further ado, Ms. Heather Roland, and team.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Levatt and all of you on the board for allowing us to come and present to you. We have had a very exciting year, as everyone has, and it has been a challenge, but the kids have really taken a bull by the horns and done a wonderful job. I think with the challenges coming from all of 21 of them being separated in different homes and different places, they were never able to actually be together in the same place. They still learned a lot about a lot of different virtual digital tools that we may not have thought to take advantage of, having not been virtual. So we're very excited to be here today. So, we, just a couple of words from me, and I'm gonna turn it over to the students. Project Citizen, as you can see underneath the school bus, is the name of this project. And it is a project of the Center for Civic Education, which is a national organization. And I learned of it from the Mississippi Department of Education gifted department. And they asked, put out the word, that different educators in Mississippi may want to attend a week-long training last summer. And it is normally done by middle and high school students. But as I was looking at it, I thought, my kids can do this. And so we decided that we would do it in 4th and 5th grade spirit at Cook Elementary. And so we have 21 students total that participated in some way. But I have to brag on these here, because these students, we've been out of school for, I don't know, a couple of weeks now, but they've been coming to my house and working on this, and they just are spectacular kids. And so what will happen with this presentation? We still have some things that we're working out and some things that we will be adding to it, some of the audio interviews and things. It would make it a little bit long for our presentation here. So we will be adding those and then sending it on to the Center for Civic Education, and we'll find out, you know, what they think about it. Project Citizen is where students take a look around their communities, which I'm so excited that you spoke about advocacy. They took, take a look around their communities and they find an issue or a problem, something that, that really seems to affect them or other people in the community. And we went through lots, because they are very civic-minded, they had a lot of different ideas. But then we came to what we consider to be a problem that affected us. And then we're tasked with looking around and trying to figure out different alternative policies, things that could, different things that we could try. After we weigh that information, we determine what our policy proposal should be. And we learned about public policy. I learned a lot about it myself. We're asked to identify the governmental body that would be in charge of this public policy. And then we're tasked with making an action plan. Now, we don't necessarily, in terms of Project Citizen, have to do all the steps of the action plan. In fact, I'm told that many of the Project Citizen groups don't get the opportunity that we're having to actually present to a governmental body, so I can, I thank you for that. And then we have a special question that we're gonna ask you at the end. So I'm going to now turn it over to my kids. So proud of you guys. All right. They all introduced themselves, but I'm gonna start off and bring Lorencia up. Oh, I did want to say one more thing. I knew I was gonna forget. Not all of our interviews are featured in this yet, but we did want to publicly thank these people. And I just wanted to say these, because I think you guys will be very impressed that nine, 10, and 11-year-olds interviewed like 30 and 45 minutes in an hour of these people. Representative Kabir Karim, Representative Richard Bennett, both from the Mississippi House of Representatives. Representative Bennett is the House Education Chair. Supervisor Leroy Brooks from the Leons County Board of Supervisors. The Mississippi Department of Education gifted Specialist Matt Sheriff. Our superintendent, Dr. Sharita Bot. Principal Mrs. Billy Smith, who's the principal of our school, Cook Elementary. Principal of Columbus Middle School, Mrs. Kimberly Gardner. Retired Columbus Middle School spirit teacher, Mrs. Sylvia Collins, also a former spirit parent. Ms. Sharita O'Neil, who's a 5th grade teacher, their 5th grade teacher at Cook, and also a former spirit parent. Carol Pielba, who is the Director of Mississippi Association for Gifted Children, also a 53-year-old veteran who is still teaching gifted in South Mississippi. And Mr. Hagan Walker, and he is a former spirit student at Cook Elementary, as am I. I was a cool kid in spirit. And so you're gonna hear a little bit more from Hagan in just a little bit. So I'm gonna turn it over to Lorencia. Lorencia, wait till I get to this side.
Our problem. This year, our 4th and 5th grade spirit class at Cook Elementary stated the problem of spirit for intellectually gifted students past 6th grade in the Columbus Municipal School District. This is a serious problem in our gifted community, because we want to have a choice to ask spirit when we are in 7th and 8th grade. We sent out a survey to all current spirit students, administrators, teachers, parents of current spirit students, and past spirit students currently in spirit and CMSD, and had 106 responses. Also, 28% of people responding did not know that spirit stopped after 6th grade in Columbus Municipal School District. 84% of those responding said that they think it's a problem that CMSD stops spirit after 6th grade. 89% of those responding know that spirit can help develop creatively and the Mississippi legislation could change their current policy by making services for 7th and 8th grade mandatory instead of optional. The government is the only group that can make public policy. This problem should be handled by the government by making a management for districts to operate gifted services from 2nd through 8th grade. There is a parent policy from Mississippi Code of 1972, and it states all local school districts may have programs for gifted education for intellectually, creatively, and artistically gifted students for grades 2 through 12, for academically gifted students in grades 9 through 12 by board. The Columbus Municipal School District policy supports gifted education as the main part of the district's overall educational offering by providing a program of enrichment for students who meet the criteria for intellectually gifted in 2nd through 6th grade. This means the board, if the board approves our issue and find funding, we can have 7th and 8th grade gifted. The Education Chair in the Mississippi House of Representatives is sponsoring a bill to make middle school gifted mandatory in 2022. The Columbus Municipal School Board has considered our proposal at the June Board meeting. None of it is part, none in the position of leadership has said they disagree with our course of having a gifted service in 7th and 8th grade. The issue seems to come down to the funding to pay for it. I love spirit, because spirit helps me involve in involve in different activities that can help my education. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Markela Davis, and this is Task 2, Alternative 1. Mississippi Hospital 666 was a proposed amendment to Section 3723119 of the Mississippi Code of 1972. It required all school districts to offer education for intellectually gifted students in grades 7 and 8, beginning with the 2020 through 2021 school year and for related purposes. Representative Richard Bennett, the Education Chair in the Mississippi House of Representatives, sponsored Hospital 666 in 2020. One advantage of waiting for this policy to be reintroduced by the legislator is if they are proven, they'll pay for it. Also, it's hard to undo a policy after it's voted in by the legislator. A disadvantage of waiting to support this policy change in the Mississippi House of Representatives, it won't be reintroduced until January 2022. If approved, the change probably wouldn't start until the 2022 through 2023 school year. This is, that's a problem, because the current CMSD-rising 7th graders, the class of 2027, will have moved on to high school, not getting to do spirit in 7th and 8th grade. The people who would support Hospital 666 would be current gifted students and parents and teachers of the gifted across the state of Mississippi. Representatives Bennett and Karim have support, have supported the proposed policy change in the past and said they would in the future. Those who oppose this policy change could be members of the legislator who may want to fund something else. I love spirit, because it helps me do things that will help grow my intellectually gifted mind.
Hello, my name is LaShawn Connor. This is S2, Alternative 2. Alternative 2 involves going to the Columbus Municipal School District Board and asking them to opt-in for gifted services in 7th and 8th grade. The statements below are from the current CMSD gifted policy. The yellow statement is the provision, MDE allows for intellectually gifted programs through A-grade. In purple is the section of our current policy we are proposing be updated. We would ask that the phrase "grade" 2 through 6 be changed to "grade 7 through 8." Definitions, the state of Mississippi defines intellectually gifted children and gifted education programs as follows. Intellectually gifted children shall mean those children and youth who are found to have an expert, especially especially high degree of intelligence as documented through the identification process. The needs of these students would be addressed based on the program options provided in the outcomes for intellectually gifted education programs, grade 2 through 8 in Mississippi. And the Columbus Municipal School District gifted education programs shall mean programs of instruction for intellectually gifted children within grades 2 through 6 in the public elementary and secondary schools of the state. Such programs shall be designed to meet the individual needs of gifted students and shall be in addition to and different from the regular program of instruction provided by the district. Task 2, Alternative number 3. We discovered a third alternative when we were doing our interviews. Every single person interviewed suggested we combine Alternatives number 1 and number 2. Approaching the school war first, then we will support the safety later. I love spirit, because we have a loving and kind teacher, and my communication skills have grown over time.
Hello, my name is Kayla Lawrence. From email from Pontet County Schools Gifted Program. Gifted units are assigned by MDE. Jan sends out those units to the district. We have elementary gifted 2 through 6 cover several students, which equates to a unit used for middle school. When MDE sends out district gifted units, it puts in one sum and pays whoever gifted that qualifies. CMSD has 4.25 gifted units assigned for 2021 through 2022 school year. We have four teachers. Gifted classes may include multiple grades at elementary and middle school levels. In 2021 and 2022, if Ms. Ray, Mrs. Ray has a much higher number of students than everyone else, one of the elementary teachers will be assigned to teach one or two sections in CMS, or we do have an additional allocation to add another elementary part-time teacher, five hours per week if needed. Until the state passes isolation to find gifted services in 7th and 8th grade, this is how other Mississippi districts are able to obtain and provide these services. I love spirit, because it helps me with learning and it helps me with what I want to be when I grow up, which is veterinary.
My name is John Phillips, and our proposed policy is the Columbus Municipal School District opts in to giving services for 7th and 8th graders in Columbus Municipal School District. The policy will read in Columbus Municipal School District, "Gifted Education Programs," GEB for short, "shall mean programs of instructions for intellectually gifted children within grades 2 to 8." In the public elementary school and secondary schools of the state, such programs shall be designed to be, to meet the individual needs of gifted children and shall be in addition to and different from the regular program of instruction provided by the district. We will support Representative Richard Bennett's proposal of a bill in the Mississippi State House of Representatives that states, "Beginning with the 2022-2023 school year, all local school districts shall have programs of gifted education for intellectually of gifted education for intellectually gifted students in grades two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, subject to the approval of the State Board of Education. I love Spirit because it has a lot of brain tissue there and it, and it has very fun activities.
Hello, my, hello, my name is Jennifer, and this is our constitutional option, opinion form. During Project Citizen, we learned about the constitutional. Supervisor Brooks, Representative Kareem, and Representative Bennett all told us that proposed policies must be constitutional. This is our response. We believe our policy is constitutional because our proposed policy does not violate a person's freedom or belief. We are not forcing people to take part. Spirit students will get to choose to take it or not. Our proposed policy does not violate the limit of the power of the government because it doesn't violate anyone's freedom of speech, beliefs, or religion. In Spirit, we learn more about ourselves and how to express our thoughts and beliefs. Our proposed policy does not violate a person's life, liberty, or property with, without giving that person a fair hearing in, in court of law or before another authorized agency of government. We are not hurting anyone with our proposed policy. Our proposed policy does not violate any person's home without a very good reason. We are not telling parents what to do. Spirit happens in schools, not at home. Parents must sign a permission to place form every year. Our proposed policy does not discriminate against people based on race, religion, gender, or ethnic groups. Spirit students get into gifted services based on our scoring at the ninety-first percentile or above on an IQ test. I love Spirit because it helps me collaborate with people and my thinking skills. Thank you.
Abets? We, we were so excited to learn that you are wanting Spirit student. Will you please tell us about the rest of your educational background?
Yeah, I, I went to good elementary school from second to fourth grade. I was also a Spirit student. Then I went to high intermediate school and it was called Lee Middle School. And then, and then I went to Columbus High. And then finally I went on to Mississippi State, got a degree in college.
We've, we read about and saw pictures of your glow cubes and glow pal. Could you please tell us more about them and how they work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the cubes, I wish I had some of them there. They're liquid activated, so when you drop the, the light cubes in the water, they turn on. They have a small battery inside and a small light. And it uses the, what's called the hot arms in water to bridge the electrical connection, make the light on. Does that make sense?
Yes. In Spirit, we learn about being aware and noticing the world around us. Reflecting on the things we notice sparks our critical and creative thinking skills and causes us to take action solving, solving a problem like with this project. What sparked the idea for glow cubes and glow pals?
Yeah, so actually when I was in college, a friend of mine was studying graphic design. And one of her professors gave them a challenge to design the concept behind a company. And they had to design it around a product that the professor gave them. And she was given a teacup. And she said, well, if the teacup, if people looked at it, then it would be a good product. A lot of people would want it. And so she asked me to help because my background was in electronics, to help make something that lights up in the water. And so that's how the original idea got started. And then we found some other really smart friends of ours that helped us get the idea off the ground.
Wow. Fascinating. Do you think the skills you learned in Spirit contribute to your success today? If so, how?
I definitely do. I've met a lot of really good friends through Spirit, a lot of really smart people. And a lot of them are still some of my closest friends today. But all of them, those skills that, that kind of put me on the path to study engineering really kind of teed me up to where I am today. So it led me towards going to college and getting an engineering degree, and that led towards building products. And that led towards, you know, designing all these toys and stuff.
My name is Dallas, and these are the steps for Task Four Action Plan. Making a survey to determine if there's a problem. Researching the MDE and MAGC gifted websites and the MS Code of nineteen seventy-two. Researching CMSD gifted policy. Doing Project Citizen lessons and other simulations about decision-making. Researching facts about giftedness. Collecting data from past barrels and graduate rates. Recording interviews and listening back to determine key ideas. Learning more about the government and policymaking procedures. Talking to districts who have the seventh and eighth grade gifted. The tasks are still, we are still completing are analyzing all data from past barrels and graduation rates. Editing all of the videos to add to our presentation. Getting letters of support from Columbus and CMSD officials for state policy. Talking to media to publicize our support of state policy. Research, researching grants for gifted funding. Writing reflections on what we learned. I love Spirit because it helps me express my learning in ways that I don't express it in my normal classes. As we look towards CMSD, one, two, three.
We love Spirit. Yes, we do. We love Spirit. How about you?
Thank you guys again so much, and parents, thank you so much for bringing them up here and entrusting them into our care and our district, Bennett Cook, and with me. Really appreciate it. They are the light of my life. Thank you very much. Just very briefly, also, I need to do an annual gifted report, and I'll do this quickly. We do have four current gifted teachers and four point twenty-six approved or allocated units, teacher units for next year. Here are some examples of different activities that we were able to do even, even though we were hybrid and virtual. Ted Cook, of course, we did our Project Citizen curriculum, public figure interviews, policy research with the younger students. Primary education thinking skills curriculum. We had Christmas around Europe, boats, history of flight, landmarks around the world. We all enjoy logic puzzles in our programs, stories with holes, escape rooms. We've done a lot of breakout boxes and escape rooms. Working backwards, puzzles, create your own country. We got with that sale in Fairview, Christmas in the White House. Pictures Worth a Thousand Words, which was a study of the meaning of culture through, through images. And that was that Stoke Spirit in Franklin. Abstracts, spring paintings, Rebus Brain teasers, game days. The middle, at the middle school and even with us, we did career research as we talked to the different people about what they did in their careers, learning style and personality inventories. And we talked a lot about affective, social, emotional skills like perseverance. Our students, a huge characteristic of gifted students many times is that things in their normal academic day can come easily for them. And so when they come across something that may be a little bit more difficult, that pulls back against them a little bit, sometimes it's hard to persevere. And so that's a topic that we specifically talk about in Spirit. Journal writing, at the middle school, a lot of genealogy, breakout boxes, success skills, including decision-making, those are actually part of our gifted outcomes that are written by MDE for second through eighth grade. Lots of virtual tools like Flipgrid, PowerPoint, Prezi, Whiteboard, Breakout EDU, TED Ed Talks. These are just our numbers for this year. We did end the year with one hundred and twenty-six gifted students. At this time, two years ago, it's the last time I was able to make an annual presentation, but we were at one hundred and sixty. So however, we have tested quite a few students in. I've been very excited. Our psychometrist and psychologist and Office of Special Services have really done a lot this semester to make sure that we're able to get our virtual students in. We have very few left to be tested during the summer. So we have projected returning students, third through sixth grade, a hundred. New students that are currently eligible for Spirit from the first grade screening, twenty-eight. And our students that are moving from sixth grade, that would be eligible if we do have seventh grade gifted, would be twenty-six. And then twenty-five eligible eighth graders. We, most schools have been gifted, gone through the gifted monitoring process over the last year and a half. I do have monthly, sometimes weekly conversations and virtual meetings with MDE gifted director. And they are, they will let us know when they get back to monitoring, but we are in compliance. And we have already done all of our reassessment reports for the students for next year. Our next steps are the annual report that I'm working on for MDE and a stakeholder survey that did go out to, one to the parents, one to teachers and administrators, and one to students. And those have come back, and so we're looking at that data to see what we can do to even strengthen our program more. I'm going to thank you so much for approving that I would be able to attend the virtual World Gifted Conference. I've never done that before, but it will be virtual, so a good time to be able to, to be able to attend it. Just to learn a little bit more about research and best practices from around the world. We are also currently gathering information. This is something that already has kind of stood out in our, in our surveys and something that we've been wanting to do are some possible field trips specifically for gifted. Separated into one for second and third grade, district-wide, fourth and fifth grade, and then sixth or sixth, seventh, and eighth. We're trying to gather that information to then submit for approval. Last thing, we are also going to be switching to a new gifted screener. And then twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, as the current one has expired. So we will, we did ask for budgetary money for that because that will be new. Did any, may I ask, talk about, did anyone have any questions? Okay, did anyone have any questions about, I know that later on there is a request, but did anyone have any questions or was unclear about the presentation anyway about how we would plan to fund seventh and eighth grade gifted if it were approved? Anybody?
I don't have any questions. But what I would like to say is you all did a phenomenal job. Children outstanding, really outstanding in presenting and really went in detail and talked about gifted policies, which is great. And the need for the seventh and eighth grade to be an extension to just stopping off in the sixth grade. It's, it's very important because it's beginning the peer pressure part of the years when they are really growing up and becoming teenagers. So that's an excellent initiative. And hopefully this time the State Department will let it stay. You know, they won't go back to sixth grade again. They will let it stay when they do mandate this legislature. But thank you all so very much, and thank you all for coming. We thank the parents for being here with you, supporting your children. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item slide seven, which is open foreign policy, B C B D. Do we have anyone here? Thank you all very much for coming. Your patience. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I guess we're back to our regulars. So right now we, item seven, open forum. We do not have anyone? Moving on to item eight. Office of Superintendent Dr. Cherie LeBott, School Operations. Dr. LeBott, do you have anything for Superintendent Travel?
No, thank you. No, ma'am.
We'll move to item B, Superintendent Recommendations. Consideration, number one, consideration to approve the student transfer. Board requesting a motion to approve our student transfer. There's been motion by Mr. Sparks. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Young. Are there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Number two, consideration and/or discussion to approve to rewire the lights at the academic complex. This is submitted by Dr. LeBott. Board, we have, we have seen the document, the quotes. Everyone has had a chance to read them. Okay. Okay, I'm requesting a motion. I'm requesting a motion, there were two different items, there were two different quotes. There are two different.
No, I mean, shouldn't we get a recommendation from?
That's what I was asking. We don't have a recommendation, there were two different quotes.
And I apologize for that.
We are gonna go with the higher quote from my understanding because they meet the, are specifications to what we need to get done for the wiring.
The higher quote was triangle, air and electrics?
That's correct.
Board, do you have any questions for discussion?
I've got a question, the one with the higher quote. Same because they met all specifications, so did both quotes not?
The other, the other specific, other company did not meet all the specifications of what we want for the lights, they were given the same specification just like for Columbus, so you can tell everything you want, but they, they did not meet the criteria. And I had Mr. Little look into it.
In order to accept he is on quotes, we have to have our quotas.
Yeah, well, we gave them that, but then.
Not just give them the same specifications, but you have to have two people that actually bid on the same standard.
So when speaking with Mr. Little, he said that the specifications on the higher bid was correct, is that right, Dr. Heda?
Put it out there, one didn't do all of it.
Yeah.
We gave them everything that you want, or we gave them the spec deal.
Right.
The company, the company that we're going with, they put everything on that deal. The company that didn't, I guess you say higher or lower with, or whatever, they left some of that stuff off.
If that's the case, legally, we're gonna have to get a second quote that meets those specifications. If that's, that's just, that's just a state law, if you have to have the peril of bidding on the same specification, if they could not meet those specifications, or didn't meet them, that's only, we don't have two quotes bidding on the exact same thing.
Okay, so we can remove that.
So at this time, would it be proper, Mr. Himmle, for me to request a motion to postpone this?
It will, that's not necessary, it's just no one, no one moved.
No one moved anyway?
It just may be a while before we can get another one because we put it out for a while. And so we'll just, we'll just leave it out until we can try to find a comparable.
Let me offer a suggestion, how much money are we talking about?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, so it's in the quote range, well, just because it's in the quote range, doesn't mean we can't put it out for his. We can get it and take it at your next board meeting probably, as you're saying. That way, even if we only get one bid, you can accept one bid, it's just if you're quoting something, you have to get two quotes.
Correct, okay, we'll look into it, thank you.
So, Mr. Himmle, so for our July meeting, we should be expecting this, and if we do have the bid, it should be stated the same way?
I'll have to look at the dates, it may be July, since we're not meeting until July twenty-second, maybe I'll get it by then. That's, you do, that's correct, you have to run it two weeks, then I think it's ten business days that you can accept it, so I think with July twenty-second meeting, but absolutely.
But the information you gave them, you requested the same information, but one company did not provide.
Yeah, we're okay with the bid process, it's just, we just have to understand that when September happens, if the lights are not done, we may be in the dark. And we've been like that for three years, and so most importantly, the bid process is important, but I do, instead of the substance.
Excuse me, so if we have been like that for three years and we requested exact specs, then when the quotes came in, we should have let them know then that they didn't send it in the way that we requested it, Mr. Spears?
My, my question is just to clarify a couple of things because obviously the range goes from five thousand to fifty thousand, that you're asking for two comparable quotes and then over fifty thousand, that doesn't mean you can't bid a project of that size. You just follow different protocols. So, so really what we would need to do, and just to understand what I think you said, Ms. Cox, and what I heard is that we would just need on this item to approve the district to advertise for bids on that project so they would have the time between now and July twenty-second to bring back, which was a lot longer window than we normally have from meeting to meeting in order to take that, consider that item that may be bid at that point, that may.
Exactly.
That's what I. That's what I was just saying. Yeah.
Exactly. That's exactly, yeah, I know, right? So I make the motion.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Spears, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Sparks, any other discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand, it is unanimous, thank you. Number three, consideration and a discussion to approve educator in residence memorandum of understanding between Columbus Municipal School District and MDE. These are educators in residency that's been in the district before. Board, I'm requesting that you approve item number three. And as we look at item number four, consideration and/or to approve contract between Columbus Municipal School District and East Mississippi Center for Educational Development. The contract for MSD and consideration and/or discussion to approve memorandum of understanding between Columbus Municipal School District and Community Counseling Services. These are all services that we've had and we've used in the, you know, previous years. I request an emotion, a motion please? Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do we have a second? Second. Second by Dr. Schumay, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay, moving on to item six. Item six is consideration and a discussion to approve the updated salary schedule, number seventeen, includes high school graduation specialist, this salary schedule for that. Board, I also ask that you look at item eight because they are similar. Consideration and/or discuss to approve high school graduation specialist job description. I'm requesting a motion to approve these two items, item six and item eight. So, the motion has been made by Dr. Schumay, I'll make the second, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Number seven, consideration and a discussion to accept the bid for Franklin Academy Roof Project.
One disclaimer I wanted to bring up from the.
Oh, excuse me, go on, I'm sorry.
My apologies, Madam President. One other thing I wanted to bring up from the budget meeting is that I know Mr. Spears asked about the roof, and I forgot my diligent assistant, the roof project, the why Franklin was not on the asset application. Well, it's because the roof project is going to be done by insurance, because it was a great question, and when I asked him, he cleared that up. Is everybody with me? Oh, I, so that's, I just wanted to clarify here.
I just want to clarify, I asked about the heating, I mean, the air conditioning in the auditorium, not the roof.
Oh, in the auditorium, okay, yeah, and we're gonna make that change, that's it, that change.
Mr. Taylor.
Okay, so, like Dr. Lot said, the, the repairs to the Franklin Academy roof are being paid for by the insurance proceeds. We've made a recommendation to the board that they accept a low bid, an order contract contingent on the insurance carrier agreeing to pay the full cost, and also with approval of our archival history. We have sent the bid tab, the nation letter to the insurance carrier. We've also, we put out the bid over a month ago, we sent the drawings and specifications to the insurance carrier, I guess back in May, May sometime. So they have, and so we'll make sure that they agree, agree with it. We're working with the same insurance carrier, the same adjusters on some other school districts, and they're very fair and favorable, and I don't see any issues with it. Only issue we do have is, I want to make the board very aware of, is that during the bidding phase, we became aware that they don't make, there are no red shingles anymore, we can't get them. So what we did, we made the base bid, a dark gray shingle, and an alternate bid item for the red shingles. And also in the bid form, we asked the bidder, stated, we didn't bid the red shingles, why he didn't? And both the bidders, Copper Top that's here in Columbus, and the other bidder, the other bidder, we're rufusolutions, they both, they both, we've looked and said that the manufacturer discontinued product and Copper Top here in town said that they both G A of uncertainty would not be producing the red shingles before next year, if even then, so. We went back and did some research on the Franklin Academy, you're all much more familiar with it, I am. And so this is a postcard from the fifties of Franklin Academy, and there had the dark gray shingles in it, not the, so that's what it was back then, of course now, the other, so that's what, that's what it looks like now, the iconic red shingles. So I've asked archival history for their approval to use the dark gray shingles instead of the red shingles, because the red shingles are not available. And I just want the board to also understand that, and also to concur with that. Because it is very iconic, and then I don't want, I know, if you start rufusing it and put the gray shingles, there's gonna be, I imagine there'd be a lot of questions. But they're, they're, they're the way it usually, I don't, you know, I don't, maybe y'all remember it ever being gray? So, but anyway, that, that's what I have, I've got the, I'd like to get the board. I'd like to get a paper copy. But it is a big change, and I know sometimes.
Thank you.
Changes hard. I tried to make that, I tried to make the gray shingles bigger, apparently before I didn't have much love for my connectivity. So, so again, our recommendation is to approve or to low bidder a copper top sheet metal here in Columbus for a low bid of three hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred dollars contingent on the approval of the insurance company to pay a hundred percent of our fees and the repair costs, and also upon the archival history approval, going back with the gray, dark gray shingles.
So I'm requesting a motion at this time, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Board requesting a motion to approve the bid for copper top sheet metals. Do we have a motion? So, has been motioned by, the motion has been made by Dr. Schumay, do we have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Young, any other discussion, questions? Dr. Schumay?
Just one quick question on timeline, do you have any idea when those two approvals might come in?
I'm hoping to get done this this summer. I know we're already in June. I, I, as soon as we took bids on Thursday, I called archival history, archival history, or sometimes it's hard, so I followed them immediately on first afternoon, looked at messages, I emailed again this morning with the photographs that y'all had here, and asking if they could approve, insurance carrier, I think, just one phone call tomorrow, we'll get their approval, gotta get them to writing, but I think we'll do that, so once we do that, we'll show a contract up with this week. And hopefully the gray, gray shingles will be very, very available and start pretty quickly. But it also, it's all the shingles, also, the shingles tie into some low, low, low slope roof, about twenty-one square feet of shingles, about eight thousand square feet of a low slope roof, the flat areas there, so it is a pretty good job.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, the motion is passed. Now we'll move, thank you, Mr. Taylor, really appreciate you driving up. We'll move into item nine. Item nine is consideration and a discussion to approve the staff slash personnel items, we need a motion for approval. Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. I'll make the second, any discussions? No discussions, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number ten, consideration and a discussion to approve school bus transportation services agreement between Columbus Municipal School District and the Housing Authority. We need a motion for this approval? It's been motioned by Mrs. Young, do we have a second? Second. It's been second by Dr. Schumay, any discussion? If no discussion, please approve by raising your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Item number seven, number eleven, excuse me, number eleven. Consideration and a discussion to approve maintenance service agreement between CMSD and Waters Truck and Tractor. We need a motion for, requesting a motion for approval? It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks, second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? Mrs. Young?
Are we, this, this states in the, oh, wait, in the agreement that would be till next year? Is it, you mentioned that it was subject to month-to-month?
No, that, that's the lot, the rental of the lot is subject to month-to-month, the service agreement is throughout the year. Similar to the same, same exact service agreement we had this year.
Okay.
And that's just, you know, when, whatever Mr. Payne can't handle is what we send to water for a certified technician to work on.
Any other questions, discussion?
So I guess my question is, so in getting, I know we have to move forward to make a decision to keep the buses going, but should we get a, let's say we get a mechanic, then what happens with this agreement? We're still liable, of course, for the agreement?
We would still be in the agreement.
But, but essentially, it's only whatever we send.
But, but essentially, it's only whatever we send, right? It will be whatever we send to you.
That, that's my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the services is for annually as needed?
Right, right, and, and right now, what he's doing, i- is he is doing the P M, which is preventative maintenance, as we've done before in the past, they, they do the P M for the buses, that, they're on a schedule. So a certain amount of buses are doing P M right now for the summer, and then we'll rotate those, the ones that haven't gotten P M in. So we get them all road ready for fall, and then once we have them all road ready, then, uh, Mr. Payne and his mechanic assistant does the, you know, minor stuff as far as adjusting brakes and, and things like that. But if it's a major repair, then that's when we send it to water.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please, uh, raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Now we're moving on to item twelve. Board, um, what I'm going to request, um, that we approve the items twelve through seventeen, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read them. Item twelve is, uh, for the nineteen base testing. And item thirteen is the M S U for the coding academy. Item fourteen is facility rental, rental. And item fifteen is for the homeless procedures. Item sixteen is for foster care procedures. Item seventeen is the English learning, uh, planing. If you've had an opportunity to read this, I'm requesting a motion for approval of item seven, twelve through seventeen. Has been motioned by Mrs. Young, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, all in favor, any questions, sorry? Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. I get a little speedy on it. All right, moving on to number eighteen. Item number eighteen, board, I'm asking that you look at item number eighteen, consideration and to approve the new seller, uh, customer agreement. Item nineteen, which is to advertise for, um, as a part of the special education program, before you do hiring as part of that project, she has to advertise for the psychologists, the speech pathologists, occupational therapists, and any other, um, therapists, physical therapists, music therapists also can be added to that before, um, they do any concrete hiring. Number twenty is consideration and a discussion to approve, that's the extended school year application, the cover page for E S Y. Twenty-one is to approve to advertise for the freshmen's laptops. Uh, board, I'm requesting a motion to approve item number eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Do I have a motion, please?
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? Any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Item number twenty-two.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
On twenty-two, uh, even though there's no conflict of interest or anything, just in the, um, abundance, the caution of, you know, someone considering some type of, uh, conflict of interest, I'm gonna recuse myself on this particular item.
Okay, item number twenty-two, okay. Okay, item number twenty-two, consideration and a discussion to approve F Y twenty-twenty-two insurance coverage, the premium summary that we do annually, uh, I need a motion for approval.
Summon.
Has been motioned by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number twenty-three. Consideration and our discussion to approve the request to advertise for a bid to purchase the Fonic curriculum. The Fonic curriculum, and also board, we're gonna look at item number twenty-four, consideration and our discussion to approve to advertise the, to bid for the science curriculum. And I'm gonna add in, uh, item twenty-five, which is consideration and a discussion to approve to hire a hearing officer, for a hearing that will play, take place here at Brandon Central Services.
Ms. Cox, can we take twenty-five separately, since it is an issue that?
Yes, sir.
A trace a little bit.
Take it separately?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, requesting a motion to approve, approve item twenty-three and twenty-four, I need a motion to approve these items.
Approved.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, second by Mr. Spears, any co, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item number twenty-five, consideration and our discussion to approve request to hire hearing officer Dalton McAlfen at his hourly rate plus actually out-of-pocket expense as allowed by the state of Mississippi to conduct a hearing at Brandon Central Service Center. Uh, we need a requesting a motion to approve.
Ms. Cox, to that, if you would, please add, in setting an initial hearing date of June the ninth, at two o'clock, or just June the ninth?
And setting the initial.
Hearing date for June the ninth.
And setting the initial hearing date of June twenty-ninth?
June ninth.
June ninth?
Yes, ma'am.
June ninth? At what time, is that a time?
We don't have to put the time, just the date.
Requesting a motion for approval.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, we have a second? Second, second by Dr. Schumake, discussion and questions?
Uh, just one question, I mean, I know we can't get all the details, can we find out a little bit more, maybe in executive session, or do we need to ask you?
I can tell you a little bit more, just all that I can do.
Well, no, I get that, but I'm.
Yes.
Okay.
So it will be discussed later. Any other discussion or questions, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item nine, is it, it's you, Office of Business Management, Ms. Rogers, consideration to approve financials, let's first look at, uh, number one, the monthly financial statement reports. When we first look at the fund balance report, uh, Ms. Rogers has a request.
Yes, I'll remember at the review meeting, and I was told that we have two agency funds still out there that have a balance to them. The board needs to take action on what to do with those funds. Uh, actually, in writing next year's budget, I see that we still have four thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents in our fund eleven fifty for the bicentennial. Does the board wish to move those funds back to eleven twenty-one, or I, I need to know where the board wants to move those funds, or keep them here, I, we're not gonna have another bicentennial for a while. Does the board want to take action on fund eleven fifty?
Eleven, you said move the fund to eleven twenty-one, twenty-one or twenty-two?
Eleven twenty-one is where these funds originally came from.
Okay, whatever, when they came from, okay, take it step by step?
Okay.
Or you wanna move to the next?
Go on, if they want. Fund is fund seven four zero one, the scholarship fund. Those funds were originally granted to the district for scholarships for students at McKellar. Um, as you know, there is a new law that we can't, we can't donate public funds, which a scholarship is basically a donation. So these funds are recommending that we move them into McKellar's activity, because they were meant for McKellar. And that's fund eleven sixty-one. And the last one is fund seven four zero two, it's called Miss Pepsi Banquet Fund. I, I have not noticed any activity on this, all it does is just collect a few cents and enter us every year. Uh, it will be the board's discretion on what you wanna do with these funds. During the review meeting, you kinda acted like maybe you wanted to move it to fund eleven sixty-eight, which is the athletic meals. So that's what, uh, we recommend, is moving these funds to fund eleven sixty-eight. I just need the board to make a formal recommendation and, and vote on it.
I'm gonna read this, the, uh, I'm requesting a motion to transfer funds, the cash left in eleven fifty, the bicentennial, to be moved back to fund eleven twenty-one. Fund elec, fund seven four zero one, the scholarship fund, moved back to McKellar's Activity Fund, number eleven sixty-one, and fund seventy-four oh two, moved to fund eleven sixty-eight, the athletic meal account. I need a motion.
Uh, uh, may I ask one, one more question? I just noticed, um, on fund eleven sixty-seven, should we leave it there, or combine it into the athletic meals?
What is fund eleven sixty-seven, is that the championship?
Fund eleven sixty-seven is what?
Well, I'm not saying that it's not, but I'm just asking, like, if we're trying to zero things out in front of where children are getting access to the fund, immediately.
We can, if the board wants to make that recommendation, fund the balance in fund eleven sixty-seven, go to fund eleven sixty-eight.
All right, let's step back. All right, the funds from seventy-four oh two will be moved to eleven sixty-eight. But the funds from eleven sixty-seven.
Will also be moved to fund eleven sixty-eight. I feel like I'm talking really loud, but I'm not talking loud enough.
No, oh, I hear you, thank you. You want to, very much. Okay. So we do have all of that down, uh, I'm requesting a motion to approve. It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion, questions? No additional discussion or questions, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you all for working through. Moving right, now the, um, now we've made, we've looked at fund eleven, the fund balance report, now I need a motion for us to approve the fund balance report, the cash balance report, the budget status report, your monthly revenue report, monthly expenditure report, and certification and summary of reconciled bank statements. Do we have a motion to approve these reports?
Summon.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumake, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any questions or comments, discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand, okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Now we'll look at our monthly ad valorem tax collection analysis report. Board, do you have any questions or discussion right here?
Yes, ma'am, I just have one, um, and it's a question I've asked before, but looking at the collections year-to-date and where we stay in, have we been able to get some clarification from the tax assessor about the back-year taxes being put into this year's collection in our numbers?
We do receive some back collections. And I'm sorry, as, as soon as you said that, I remembered that it was a request, the board asking to put that in there, um, in your resources. And I think we're getting spread, you could put in your resources.
So, so I just want to clarify that the number that we're seeing as of year-to-date collection says that we're slightly ahead of where we were um, last year, ninety-six point nine versus ninety-six point seven, that that's not distorted in any way by the fact that this year he's also giving us back-year collections.
In any year's collections, you're gonna see back collections involved in it. Last year, they did, I affirmed, they helped them collect those back collections. I haven't noticed anything that just really kind of off-kilter with a lot of old collections. And I'll, I'll make sure that the board can see what we collected apart this year, my collections, if not significant.
Thank you.
Stand it, okay. C M S D fund balance trends, any discussion, board? Bank cash balance yearly comparison? The athletic report? Number one point eleven, consideration and a discussion to approve the budget amendment, requesting a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So.
Has been motioned, the motion is made by Mrs. Young, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, discussion, questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on, item one point twelve, consideration and a discussion to approve the fixed asset disposals. Also, one point thirteen, consideration and a discussion to approve recovered loss fixed assets disposals and dispose of as junk. One point fourteen, consideration and a discussion to approve the reverse fixed assets disposals to active. We need a motion to approve these items, please.
So, ma'am.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving right along to item fifteen, the claim docket, I'm requesting a motion to approve the claim docket excluding the claim for Hustle University, item number three four three three six, three three six four, I mean, three four three three six four. Requesting a motion?
So, ma'am.
It's been motioned by Mr. Spears, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. The next item, requesting approval for the Hustle U claim, number three four, three three six four. All in favor, please, no, I need a motion, excuse me, I'm running on it. Need a motion for approval?
So moved.
It has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, a second?
Second.
Has been second by Mrs. Young, discussion? No discussion? All, excuse me.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, anything else you want to add, Mr. Impel?
Oh ma'am, I think I played it out pretty clearly in my email to the board.
We read it. Any other discussion? All in favor, fold the bill on the left, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion failed. Next we have our consent agenda, I'm sorry, excuse me. Item one point sixteen, federal programs and IDEA monthly financial review, any discussion or questions, board?
Just one thing.
Yes ma'am.
Although, can we renumber so that the, the one we just voted on is one point one six and then federal programs is one point one seven, is that okay?
Yes ma'am, thank you very much, one point one six. It's the Hustle claim, three four, three three. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Discussion, one point seventeen. The consent agenda items. The monthly policies review is of the one point one policy for the gift program. And the changes here is to extend it through seventh and eighth grade. Consideration for the, B would be the cheerleaders, out-of-state overnight field trip. And the summer smart academy, Cook and Stokes, a out-of-state field trip also. And along with some dates for us to remember. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Mr. Spears, requesting a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Requesting a motion to go into closed determination for executive session.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks. We're now in executive session. Oh, we both? Oh, I'm sorry, just one need second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. We are now in executive session.
Mr. Sparks made the motion to go into executive session.
Um, we did have a recess. The motion was made by Dr. Look, Dr. Schumate, second by Mr. Spears. It was unanimous. Um, motion to return to executive session. The motion was made by Mr. Sparks. I made the second. It was unanimous. The motion to take up items in executive sessions was made by Dr. Schumate. The second by Ms. Young. It was unanimous. And the items were discussed. The to approve May tenth executive session minutes. The motion was made by Mr. Sparks, second by Mr. Spears. It was unanimous. And there were no actions taken or potential litigations or real estate. Now we're requesting a motion with all said and done. Any discussion of anything, any comments anybody would like to make?
So move.
I ain't gonna do them again. Because the motion has been made by Mr. Spears. Second, second by Mr. Sparks. Discussion? No discussion. All is.